The City Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 21st of 2020. Before I submit the roll call. For Commission present, we have an official city announcement. Mr. Gah.
Yes, just something to start the meeting off. Rather unfortunate, yesterday, we lost a city staff member. Fire Captain Engineer Hillary Hartman. He'd been battling cancer for the past several months and passed away as complications due to that. He'd been with the city 32 years. He started as a volunteer and had been a full-time staff member for the past 29 years, was real close to making that 30-year mark. Many of you know Hillary. He was a very quiet, very quiet leader. He's missed, he's been missed the last few months and his firefighter family is very, very much missing him today and we just wanted to share that news publicly. No arrangements have been made yet but are pending. But if the Commission would like to perhaps have a moment of silence before the meeting starts, that would be appreciated.
So, I'd like to have that moment of silence now for Captain Hartman. Thank you all. Let the record show, we're missing two Commissioners, Vice President Frederick and Commissioner Steiner. First item off is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Just one minor amendment, President Decker. Under number nine, we have a presentation and if it's possible, if we could switch over to that at 5:00, I believe they should all be here at that time.
Okay. So, we'll amend the Order of Business to include a 5:00 timetable. For the presentation from the Dickinson State University Parks and Rec and Dickinson Public Schools. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the Order of Business?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the Order of Business.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
The second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the amended Order of Business, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioners, anything on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, before we get a second, I just have one question on the consent agenda. The flex spending plan, that has been distributed to all the city employees, do they have full understanding before we approve this?
I do not believe it's been distributed yet. This is, this is a document, we just changed companies and so it's a required by law document to have in place. And because we're changing companies, we needed to update it and make some changes and then once approved, it will be documented. Really, there's, there's nothing changing in there. I think we just needed to, it was to comply with federal law to have a flexible spending plan, you have to have such a document in place.
My question then on... Commissioners, did you have a chance to look at the resolution? Because we have a resolution in here for this. And we put this on the consent agenda and I've said this before, I do not like having things on the consent agenda that our group votes. This is a resolution.
Well, perhaps then let's move it to Administration.
And has legal, you reviewed both the resolution and the plan?
Yes, President Decker, I have reviewed this. I've also been in contact with Ms. Nomenek who I've worked with. This is based on our approval and again, it's simply putting in place what was once there considering the companies have changed.
And this is Resolution...
Oh, one.
Of 2020?
Correct.
One of 2020. The, we'll need to amend the Order of Business to move that into Administration.
Correct.
Is there any disagreement with moving that into E of, or actually D of Administration? Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to do so?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion with a second to move this to Administration, Section D. Any further discussion? Very none will vote on the moving of Resolution 1-2020 to Administration, Section D. Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now we'll go back to other items on the consent agenda. Is there anything else you wish to discuss? If not, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Very none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. First thing up on the agenda this evening is a Phase Two Event Center Agreement. Mr. Gah.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. In the 2019 budget, $50,000 was allocated to conduct a feasibility study for a proposed event center in the future. In June, a contract was awarded to CSL. It was a two-part contract, $34,500 for Phase One and in additional, $15,000. But Phase Two, it was stipulated in the contract that Phase Two would not occur until there was a further vote from the Commission to continue. You've seen the Phase One, we call it a draft at the time, but you've seen that, basically looking at the market and possible sites and from that, we believe there is a market and potential locations. Phase Two would be to look at exactly what size of facility might be appropriate for our size and of our community and market and also to look at what it would cost to operate that. Again, would complete a document to be used in the future in looking at moving towards an actual event center. And again, this is just a study, nothing's been determined and it is the staff recommendation to approve completion of Phase Two.
Mr. Gah, part of Phase Two would also be finding a location?
Potentially. In Phase One, potential locations have been identified. If at any point in time when the Commission's ready, if they wanted to purchase a location or set aside when they could, that potential cost of land would be included in the Phase Two. As far as what it would cost to buy the land needed for such a facility.
Any other questions for Mr. Gah?
Mr. President.
Ms. Trustam.
Mr. Gah, what was the timeline for Phase Two?
And we have discussed this at a work session prior to this. I guess my only concern is we're missing two members this evening. I guess it would be my recommendation to just put it off to the next meeting. We have full Commission. So if they have any questions that we have not asked, we can just delay it for two weeks.
Sure, yeah. It could be tabled if that's the wishes.
So, I would, I'd look for a motion to table this.
I'll move.
A motion to table?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions? Comments, concerns? Very none will vote. Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This item is tabled to our first meeting in February. Mr. Gah, we have an RFP for Legal Services?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. At the request of the Commission, we've, we've put out this RFP to evaluate the status of our legal services. Currently, we have a contract for general legal services, city attorney type of services and then one for city prosecution services. At this time, we thought it might be appropriate to send those out. So the RFP would allow for attorneys and/or firms to put forth a proposal for either one of those or both of those. I'm thinking that perhaps if we have the same firm on one, there may be some cost savings. The idea would be that we'll release that tomorrow if approved by the Commission, 30-day application process and then we'll spend some time reviewing that for a potential decision in March.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on this RFP? I have not received any concerns from the other Commissioners on the RFP, so... Unless, as Commissioners, you have any concerns or questions for Mr. Gah? I'd look for a motion then on the RFP.
Mr. President, I move. Chair, approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Gah? Very none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up, we have a proclamation and before I make this proclamation, is there anyone from the Giving Hearts? Do they have any kind of presentation that they would like to come forward?
Thank you for having us here today and for recognizing Giving Hearts Day. Giving Hearts Day is February 13th this year and Giving Hearts Day has been around for 12 years and we are part of a selfless collaborative that we have, our nonprofits going together in efforts to give more awareness of Giving Hearts Day and help others.
Right, well, well, thank you and, you know, thank you for all the work you do in the community. I know, I look at your group and I see you're all involved and just all kinds of different activities within the city. We sometimes joke that we're always running into the same people whenever we go places but we know how much everybody cares and it is really a great thing that you guys do for our community. So, if there's nothing else, I'd go ahead and read this proclamation. Giving Hearts Day proclamation for Dickinson, North Dakota. In observance of Giving Hearts Day, whereas in 2008, Giving Hearts Day was created by the Dakota Medical Foundation and the Impact Foundation as the first one-day virtual fundraising event of its kind in the region. And whereas, the goals of Giving Hearts Day are to raise awareness of the charitable nonprofit sector and its organizations in North Dakota and Western Minnesota, to assist the organizations in better telling their mission stories, to promote online giving and to provide donors the opportunity to multiply the results of their giving. And whereas, this 24-hour online fundraising event is dedicated to inspiring online donations for charities at impactgiveback.org. And whereas, Giving Hearts Day is powerful because it inspires so many to give for the first time or to contribute to newly discovered charities. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector provides much-needed services that improve the quality of life for so many in our community. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector supports individuals and families with quality programs, materials and funds that promote and encourage self-sufficiency. And whereas, all of the above-listed benefits serve to strengthen the fiber of our community and make it richer for all residents. And whereas, in order to provide these benefits, charities who provide these services need ongoing funds in order to provide long-term substantiable services our residents in need. And whereas, these charities have demonstrated a need for collaboration and resources and have joined together for this one-day online fundraiser. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby declare February 13th, 2020, Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson, North Dakota. And call upon the public officials, business and community leaders and educators and encourage all Dickinson citizens to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, programs in order to recognize the charitable nonprofit sector and their staffs and volunteers who provide essential services that improve the quality of life for our citizens. Acknowledge that the charitable nonprofit sector is beneficial in Dickinson, North Dakota and Southwest North Dakota because it improves lives, outcomes and strengthens our community. To promote the support of charitable nonprofit sectors that equip our citizens with tools needed to lead the safe, healthy and productive lives and support Giving Hearts Day, take action by volunteering or making financial donations to local charities in Dickinson and in Southwest North Dakota at givingheartsday.org. And this will be signed by me once we get a motion to approve this proclamation.
Chair, approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving this proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. There you have it. Mr. Gah, thank you very much. Sure. Come on up. We'll push in here. So, yeah, you come around the back here.
Press it down, you want to hold that. You want it in your picture.
Okay, we'll get props. There you go.
Good one.
Nice. There you go.
You're better than that.
All right.
As close as I can get.
Mine don't hurt, okay.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Way official.
I can try.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Move on to Item D, Resolution Number 1-2020. This is the approval of, to repeal the existing cafeteria plan and adopt a cafeteria plan for a health flexible spending account and dependent care flexible spending account offered through Discovery Benefits. Any questions for Mr. Gah or staff on this plan? Not, I'd look for a motion. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Very none will vote. Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right. Moving right along here. We have no reports from public safety this evening, so we'll move into engineering. Mr. Kubis, you have a North Dakota DOT bridge inspection and load rating agreement.
I do, thank you, President Decker. This is an agreement to do bridge inspections in Dickinson. It's a new agreement for us because in the past, the DOT has done these inspections at no cost to the city or other cities or other counties in the state. Internal changes in their department have required that the costs now go out to these communities, so that's why this agreement is in front of you today. So the agreement would be to inspect the 17 structures that we have in Dickinson today and these are a biannual inspection, so every other year, they get inspected. More than likely, the DOT will hire a consultant to do these inspections and we don't have a cost on that yet, but based on inspections that have been done in the past that I've been made aware of, I think $2,500 per inspection is a very conservative estimate. For our 17 structures, that would be a cost of $42,500 every other year. And this cost won't be a cash payable type payment. It'll be automatically deducted from the federal aid that we receive through the DOT, which is approximately $950,000 every year. So, 20, excuse me, $42,500 will come out every other year out of our $950,000 annual allotment that we get from the DOT. Staff has reviewed this agreement and would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this agreement with the North Dakota DOT? Mr. Kubis, on the higher end of, I know you said you were being conservative, what would possibly be on the higher end you've seen on a bridge inspection?
So, what could happen is if we have structures and a lot of times you see these more in the county, where they're a relatively dilapidated structure, that needs to have a posted rating put on it, you see that out in the county quite a bit where it's a six-ton bridge. Doing a bridge rating requires a little more in-depth analysis, that could probably be another $2,000 per structure. I don't anticipate we'll have any of those structures in town. And then most of our structures, I think, will come in well less than the $2,500 because I don't have the exact number, but probably 10 or more of the 17 structures are real simple box culverts, quick inspection compared to a bridge with a lot of beams and potentially bolts and connections. So, I think the $42,500 is a really conservative estimate.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis on the agreement with the North Dakota DOT? Very no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on this agreement.
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Kubis or staff? Very none will vote. Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a, another agreement with the DOT for the business loop, micro-surfacing?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This is a project that's going to happen in conjunction with the Velard lighting project that we've talked about quite a bit at past meetings. This micro-surfacing project is really the project that will create the road diet that we've spoken about again quite a bit at past meetings. It's just a thin layer of an asphaltic coating that'll go on the existing roadway and this will start from the east, excuse me, the west exit of Dickinson, Exit 59, and will run through the limits of our Velard lighting project out to 10th Avenue East. So it's a little longer than the Velard lighting project, it includes the west business loop. Again, this is a standard DOT agreement that we see with every project that we do with federal aid. Although it's unusual in the sense that it's on the regional system, usually we pay 80/20 on our federal aid projects. This one being on a regional system, it's a 90/10/10, so it's 90% federal aid, 10% state and 10% local. The cost estimate that was with the agreement puts Dickinson's share at a little less than $100,000. So, maintenance for the roadway will remain with the city as it is today. Staff has reviewed the agreement and would recommend approval.
Just to clarify, we went 90/10/10? Or is it 95/5?
I thought it was 90/10/10.
Okay. That's 110%, isn't it?
Oh, 80/10/10.
80/10, okay.
We're 10%.
Okay.
Sorry.
Still a good deal for us.
It is.
And the, if I read, maybe I missed it, the striping, does that fall upon us? The striping, or that's all included in the project, right?
The striping is included in the project.
And at one time during the one early meeting and Mr. Gah, he can maybe, they had talked about putting a divider crossing, pedestrian crossing in, is that still part of the plan?
It is, a pedestrian crossing at First Avenue West. Is that...
Well, I thought it was almost mid-block there.
They had talked about that. I think recent times have been keeping it at the corners and then potentially having one, potentially two pedestrian actuated.
Right, lights.
But they haven't totally come in on that that I know of, but they have looked at it.
I know, they had discussed that one time, possibly like a mid-block crossing.
I think they're keeping everything at the corners now, as I recall. And then there is one pedestrian activated crossing already that would be kept in place and then one added at First Avenue West.
Okay, so that's where they're going to put that. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis? Not, I'd look for a motion on this agreement.
Chair, approve? Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Kubis on this project? Very none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a 2020 Millen overlay street project and a special improvement district.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This is a project we've just talked about recently, which the city has budgeted and approved for four areas for the 2020 Millen overlay project. So that we've budgeted for four areas. Recently, the Commission has approved a policy for assessing some of the concrete improvements made with these types of projects. Per the Sentry Code, any improvement whose costs are planned to be assessed back to the landowners need to be identified in a preliminary engineering report or, as we refer to it, a PER. In your packet is that PER for the project and it discusses three of the areas out of the four that were planned and budgeted for. The reason the one area doesn't show up in the PER is because there are no concrete improvements on that one corridor and the policy that was adopted for assessment only assesses concrete improvements. We only created one PER for these three districts, so there'll be three resolutions in front of you to approve. The PER touches on all three of those districts, so we have one PER that will be included as part of each of the resolutions. I believe the preliminary engineering report that you have is quite self-explanatory. I think it does a thorough job of explaining what is and what will be assessed to the landowners. I do want to add that as part of this project, if these resolutions are passed, creating three special improvement districts, that will have a public hearing that'll be held on February 11th at 5:00 here in the City Commission chambers where each landowner that's in these districts will have a separate mailing inviting them to that meeting. So no one potentially that could have any special assessment in these districts will go without a notice. Everyone will be getting an individual mailing for the project, so. City staff has reviewed these resolutions, we've reviewed the PER, we recommend approval and we stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this PER or the special improvement districts? This is, or this does contain three separate resolutions, so we'll have Resolution 2-2020, 3-2020 and 4-2020 to consider. Each one spells out the area that has been set up as a special improvement district. Any questions for Mr. Kubis on any of these districts or these resolutions? Any questions for Mr. Kubis on any of these districts or these resolutions? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion on two-dash-twenty-twenty.
President, move to approve?
I have a motion to approve, two-dash-twenty-twenty?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? There are none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. On resolution three-dash-twenty-twenty, are there any questions for Mr. Kubis? There are none, I'd look for a motion on three-dash-twenty-twenty.
Move to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? There are none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. On four-dash-twenty-twenty, are there any questions for Mr. Kubis? There are no questions, no comments, I'd look for a motion on four-dash-twenty-twenty.
Move to approve?
Second.
Yeah, a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions? There are none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kubis. We'll move on to our five o'clock timetable. We have a presentation this evening, and Commissioner Trustum, you want to set this up?
Thank you.
Okay. I just saw you're on here, on the.
Not sure.
Okay, all right. So, couple gentlemen, come up.
Well, thank you for answering that, I wanted to ask that. Hopefully, I don't, so you guys, but first of all, thank you so much for having some of the, there with you. Really an idea that, that myself and Coach Dutton and.
Is this on?
It's on, it's on to me, so.
You give us your names?
Yeah, for the record, we just need to state your names.
Perfect. I'm, I'm clearly a city director, so we have this part two, city manager, so we're very, 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 myself along with Dickinson, and City of Dickerson, and, 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 we talked about hopefully this, our campus is better, number one. Number two, hopefully, we're better with the project that, you know, if you did this hard, you, if you live in a campus, we are, you know, BPS, we are, you know, we, so we put our heads together and started with the pepper, this kind of idea, we put together that. And these were both looking at softball field, two big, and also soccer, as well, soccer field, as we see in the blue box in their dark room, actually, we talked about putting softball field, and two soccer fields, too, as well, to dominate the party. And as we move forward into what we want to talk about, to what, to what, we just start with an R D, and we all look at, as well, we felt, collaborated together, we could, 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 we could.
You don't have a hard timeline right now?
We don't.
Beginning construction, or?
No, we haven't talked any construction, or, or, anything, just, I'm gonna make sure that, we can talk about an entity that moves it forward, if it will, if it will, if it will, they use the last, or, 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 we might, we might, we might, we might, we might, we might, we're, 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 we're.
Any cost estimates?
Really, just a rough process, a bit that's, that's, I gather, through, through structural process, shared with you, if they're, if they're, if they're, would be roughly seven.
And I know at one time there was a discussion with the past administration at the DSU about a sports bubble, or is that anywhere figured into this plan?
Yeah, we look at the bottom right hand, question there's three, and two things we look up there, is looking at the, 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 of course, the VAC side, both the west side and not the third side, there'll be a possibility, future-wise, and above there, and then two things over there, two-stock grass, so, which is our better grass field right now. We already have new groups that are using that, new football, new soccer, all new groups are already using that, plus the other part of it would be a whether's ever future building for the university, that would be grass, and be a possibility for the university to develop, that would be different, that would be, 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 that would be.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Yes, I do. So with the rodeo part, have you talked to the rodeo clubs or anything? Because you have it on there, but you really didn't touch on that.
Yeah, I like, especially. Yeah, we've had the initial discussions with them, and we're also going to talk about it next week, if they're, if they're, if they're, if they're, if they're, if they're , if they're, 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 if they're , if they're, 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 if they're,
So, I think it really just kind of, in my eyes, um, adds a little reassurance to that replat that was done, uh, a few months ago, that no utility issues will, will pop up there in the future. So, um, kind of, kind of a cleanup item, actually. Um, staff again has reviewed it and we would recommend approval.
Okay, uh, any questions for Mr. Kubis? We just have the resolution in our packet, we don't have the other item you spoke of.
Oh, oh, the actual drawing or the?
Commissioners, do you have the, the utility?
I, I don't have it, so.
Well, if, if, I can elaborate a little bit, but it, it's the standard utility vacation, uh, petition that you've seen on other ones.
Okay.
Um, it was signed off on all, on all parties other than the cities waiting for approval.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Kubis on this resolution to approve the vacation of a utility easement within the Country Oaks Estate, Sedition, City of Dickinson, North Dakota, and this will be five dash twenty twenty. Are you know questions or comments? I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And our, if you have one other, oh, nope, this is Assistant City Engineer Marshick is presenting the FEMA Community Rating System.
Hey, President Decker, it's me, uh, uh, we're doing a certification for our annual certification of the community rating system with the requirement under the, of, of, this program provides us citizens with a high risk, this, 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 and, and, and the same stuff that we're, 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 we're.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this FEMA Community Rating System recert? No questions or comments? I'd look for a motion on this recertification.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to Public Works. Uh, Mr. Zurov, you have, uh, agreement with Apex for a septic or a receiving station.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission members. First of all, I want to, I have up on the screen, uh, the location of what's going to be our, get it turned on. Our septic receiving station. On the bottom middle, you will see the, the location, uh, that we decided, uh, for, for this station. Maybe I'll back up just a little bit. We've, we spent the last probably year and a half trying to find a good location for this project. Um, we've looked at many areas at the plant, um, and how we connect out there with the system we have. We, uh, looked at this site, the West Pump Station, which is Highway ten in the West Business Loop. And originally, we looked at the north part of this, uh, lift station and, and joining part, but, um, more recently, uh, we've decided that this west side of the, of the west lift station, uh, be the, the best place for this, uh, septic receiving, uh, project. One of the things that, uh, you, you see, and since I can't point with the laser, um, off where the red square is, uh, is the, to the north is the sewer line, and then to the south is the water line that will connect to this station. One of the, uh, items we wanted on this station was a good location. It's looking at a package deal, um, similar to our fill, water fill station. Although it's a package station, uh, it'll have twenty-four seven access, uh, it'll be, uh, able to remotely put in your, uh, your code or your key code, um, and have flows monitored, uh, for the, uh, whoever uses the station. Talking with industry, uh, we've, uh, decided that, um, one of the areas that they wanted was an easily, uh, way to get rid of the, uh, septic and, and a gravity system. So, putting this station on the west side of that, um, south on, on the, uh, graphic you see here, uh, allows us to drop this station, uh, in elevation, and so when the trucks and vehicles come in, they can gravity, uh, into the, into the package station. By doing this, though, it, it requires that we build a retaining wall, uh, from, uh, where the vehicles drive to and the, uh, station. So, um, we have before you an amendment, uh, to the task order number three, amendment one to task order three, uh, number three for the septic receiving station, um, for eighty-two hundred dollars for design, uh, of that retaining wall, and to finalize our septic receiving station project. And I'll sort of take, any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on this amendment? This agreement with Apex? Mrs. Zurov, the, um, I know that most of that area there is concrete now, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
What's the typical size of a vehicle that'd be dropping off the, the product there?
Well.
Anything we should be concerned with, the wear and tear or that's built up?
No, that, that concrete was built, uh, you know, for bigger trucks to come through because we have trucks coming in with chemical and everything on that. If you'll notice in that bottom area too, uh, we are removing some of that concrete, so that, uh, when they do, uh, dump, uh, there is a, a drain there that connects to the sewer, and they'll have access to potable water to spray down the area.
Okay.
But that, that area where the trucks, you know, will sit, will be designed to meet that requirements, and I believe, um, uh, the, the rest of the, the facility can handle the trucks that come in, because we do bring in big trucks for chemical.
And so when they come in and use their identification code, that's, basically, the, the station will be shut down unless they bring in, somebody could just not come in there and illegally dump?
Nope, the only way to, to access to, to, uh, uh, put product into that station is to have a code, uh, uh, just like the automatic, automatic fill station. And, and we probably look at, I'll probably talk to I T about having a camera there too, like a, a water fill station.
That was gonna be my next question.
But we'll probably have a camera because we do have our west, uh, pump station there, uh, and a lot of, uh, infrastructure. But that'll work really good for the, the larger trucks. Normally, we have the, the smaller single axle trucks, but last couple of years, we have had the bigger trucks from other counties, um, deliver, uh, you know, uh, temporary man camps, things like that. This will monitor their flow, uh, have a grinder and be able to sample product as it's being delivered.
Any other questions for Mrs. Zurov on this agreement? Hearing no comments or questions, I'd look for a motion on this agreement with Apex.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Zurov, you have a bid for a new baler, and I understand that Mr. Proust is gonna be presenting.
Yeah, as Mr. Proust moves forward, um, we did put out the bid for the baler. Uh, Mr. Proust did a lot of work and, uh, did look at other balers, uh, in the area, uh, so, uh, he put up this together, so I would pass it off to Mr. Proust.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Um, we're talking about the baler that is, uh, mainly, uh, compact, solid waste in the cube, or, or. Okay, we're talking about the baler that, uh, compacts the materials at our baling facility, uh, compacts the waste into cubes, and then we ship it to the landfill for disposal. Um, we did bid openings on Tuesday, January seventh, we received a total of four bids. After some extensive research at all the, uh, machines that were bid, we are making a recommendation to purchase the, I'll say, third highest priced machine. Uh, it's a Centurion, uh, one fifty, that was bid from Recovery Systems, for a total amount of five thirty-nine, five forty. I would also like to add an oil cooler option. Uh, it's a stand, uh, that elevates the oil cooler up off of the ground by five feet, which includes all the hoses and such, for an additional five thousand dollars. We've been, uh, uh, using Harris machinery for the last seventeen years. Uh, it's the machine that we've, machines that we've been using since the baling operation ever started with City of Dickinson. We've had really good luck with them. The last machine, excuse me, the last machine has made seventeen years, but we started using them when the city first started baling waste in the early nineties. Going into the international baler a little bit, uh, it was the lowest bid machine. There's only one that's in the solid waste operation. I reached out to their, uh, contact for that machine. He was not impressed. He, uh, he said it was a very dirty operation. Uh, it was, they're a smaller facility, and when I was using his numbers, uh, the most I could come up with is about seventeen ton per hour, which is significantly less than what we're, uh, baling right now. Uh, we're hoping to get up into that forty to fifty ton an hour range with the machine, um, just so we can cut our baling times down a little bit, so we can utilize our facilities a little better, and same with our staff. They did offer to make several changes to their machine, which would then put us into a trial period. What I'm looking at there is, they're gonna keep retrofitting the machine to meet our needs. I don't know if that's the right option, if we wanna go down that, uh, that road. Uh, they focus strongly into the recycling operation and not so much into the solid waste side. Uh, one thing also, the machine that we are recommending, the Centurion, is a single engine, single motor, and single pump stack unit. All the other, the other three were all doubles or duels, which means there's more maintenance costs involved in that as well, as we go on to do some of our repairs. Uh, the Centurion also uses the less, uh, least amount of oil at nine dollars a gallon. It'll obviously reduce our maintenance costs when we do, um, our services on that hydraulic tank. So, the difference between the two Harris machines, the Grilla is just basically a factory standard machine. It's their lower classed item. A lot of the items that we were looking for in our bid spec were add-ons versus in the Centurion, they're actually built into that model. So, there's no add-ons built on, on it. It has a little lighter framing and structure, and then that machine is, um, actually made to order. The Centurion is sitting on their lot right now, ready to go out. We could see it as early as the end of February. This machine actually has a machine plate and head, which allows for some tighter clearances, um, less jams in that case, and, um, the kidney filtering loop, kidney filtering loop system is actually tied indirect. This does also have a more robust framing structure, which is, means they strengthened up the soft spots, they added in a few extra gussets and reinforcements. And as far as the Sierra baler goes, it was our highest bid machine. I did take a trip out to Pierce, South Dakota to look at a similar machine out there. I was not impressed with what I had seen compared to our machine that's seventeen years old. Their machine was four years old. This is a twenty-twenty budgeted item for the amount of seven hundred thousand over a seven-year period. Aside from our recommendation to purchase the Centurion for five thirty-nine, five forty, along with an additional five thousand dollars, I did get a, uh, proposal from Burger Electric cause all the machines would require power supply movement. They did estimate that at about thirty-one-five. And all of that has to be in watertight conduit due to the, um, atmosphere, moisture, uh, moisture in our atmosphere.
Mr. Proust, is that the only electrical company you contacted?
Yes, they, they're actually the ones that built the building, did all the electrical at that point. Uh, when we had our fire, I wanna say in two thousand and nine, they redid all the electrical, um, especially when it came to the baler. So, they're very knowledgeable on the machine.
Any other questions for Mr. Proust on this bid? If no one has any questions, I'd look for a motion on this bid to purchase a new baler for our, uh, solid waste department.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
For the second. And this, uh, motion does include the five thousand dollar add-on. She signaled, Commissioner Trustum signaled yes on that, so. Any other discussions, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. While we have you up here, Mr. Proust, I just wanna, I, I made Mr. Zurov aware of, I've been contacted by a couple of outlying cities.
Yep.
I don't know if he's made you aware of their recycling issues. I think we need to put this on, uh, one of our work sessions to start some serious discussion about our capacity and how we can assist. The City of Beulah reached out to me, they lost their contract, and they're looking for somebody to help them with their recycling. I know that a couple of other cities have also been interested in that discussion. So, I think we need to take a serious look at what we may have to do to, to, um, make it cost-effective and, and maybe even change some of our operations to assist some of them, because they're gonna run into the same issues we are.
President Decker and Commission, we do have, um, the project that we've been working on, you know, for quite a few years, on, uh, you know, updating, uh, a recycling area. In fact, we're meeting with Houston Engineering this week, I believe.
Thursday.
To look at a, at a, at a building, you know, for recycling, and how we're gonna improve that, plus maybe an area for drop-offs, you know, a collection site for the public twenty-four seven, out either by the, the baler. You know, and then that brings the discussion too, which we have about, uh, multi-use apartments in commercial, you know, what wind, wind do we move to that, uh, and in addition to outside communities? So, um, I think finding the best location for how we're gonna do recycling, uh, if we need a, a bigger, uh, not baler, but a bigger compactor, and how we work that in, I think is integral, especially with now with maybe the landfill, uh, becoming, uh, that we don't need to build out there, maybe we look right at the, near the baler in that area, uh, increasing our recycling capacity, so.
I think that's, it's a good discussion to have, and we just, um, um, if we have to lead the discussion in southwest North Dakota, then that's what we need to do when it comes to recycling. Ultimately, I, I think it would be great to have a, a, an area that's twenty-four hour drop-off. We could have the modern goat, for those of you that are old enough to remember the goat we used to have, where everybody would drop off in town. All it ate, though, was aluminum, so, um.
Well, we, we do have that meeting, and I think once we get some ideas together, we'll bring it to work session as, as far as expansion of the recycling, and I think that's kind of a great beginning. I, I hope that's the direction you want us to go.
All right.
If I could take that just a little further, um, Mr. Zurov did bring up about the commercial. I did get reached out, or, um, local company here just reached out to me this afternoon in regards to our commercial recycling program. So, I think it is probably getting close to the right timing to where we start talking about it, um, to where we bring something forward. And then, uh, the D S U and Dickinson Public Schools people left. Uh, just so that you know, the property they're looking at, uh, uh, turning into, uh, ball diamonds, is actually the home of one of our recycling sites. So, with that one leaving, we're down to one, which is on Broadway. I would like to look at a twenty-four hour monitored drop-off location.
Improve that site?
I, I would move it to a different location, closer to our facilities, but it would be tied into our facilities. We've been looking at options.
I, I think the problem, though, and we can have that discussion, is if you move it closer to that facility, it, it's still, the people, the convenience of not having to drive as far, you know?
I've been out to Rapid City, Bismarck, all of their recycling centers are kind of moving closer to their facilities. Um, the one out in Rapid City is actually tied in right with their solid waste site, but it's a work, uh, work session discussion, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into, uh, item ten because planning, billing and codes have nothing for this evening, so item ten is public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. You have any concern not on our agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name and let us know your concern. Anyone have any issues that the commission needs to be aware of that were not on the agenda? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public, we'll close agenda item number ten. Commissioners, is there anything you wish to speak to, anything that was not on the agenda? Hearing nothing from the commissioners, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
The movement.
Second.
We are adjourned.